Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September meeting of the Towne Board of the Town of Kent. Could we please stand for the pledge?
I'd like to lead this flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We are going to table the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. I'm going to make a motion to table it.
Yes, I don't have one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and today we have both Towne Board alternates, just as record, and I think we're ready to go. So we will go with Marriott property.
My name is Bruce Barber, the town's environmental planner. This was an application that the board approved to construct a three-car garage, a patio, a driveway, as well as other site improvements. The work's been completed, and inspection was conducted back in the fall of last year, 2024, to determine if the site's been vegetatively stabilized. It had in part been done. Reinspection was conducted this past summer and found that the site was fully stabilized. So there's three actions for the board to consider this evening. The first is that, as the board is aware, usually it's a two-year timeframe before a bond would be released from the erosion sediment control bond. However, the planning board engineers made the recommendation that, in this case, it's a small site, and the site is fully vegetative, and you may wish to waive that requirement this evening. The second action is to return or authorize the Towne Board to return the remaining escrow account, which is an amount of $375. And lastly is to return the actual erosion sediment control bond, which is an amount of $8,500. So the waiver would be first, followed by the recommendation to the Towne Board.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to waive the two-year exemption to...
So two-year requirement before the bond can be released from initial stabilization.
Okay, two-year bond before it can be released. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to forward the recommendation to the Towne Board to refund the remaining of the escrow of $375. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly is the bond agreement for, we want to send to the Towne Board for the... Which bond is that?
See, actual erosion sediment control bond.
The erosion control bond, sorry, for $8,500 for the said property.
Correct.
And at 189 Mooney Hill Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's everything for that. We'll move on to Kibbutz Carmel LLC.
Jamie LaJews from Inside Engineering, serving in landscape architecture. It's been a while. We're here before you tonight for the property located at 137 Coalshire Court for the owners of Kibbutz Carmel LLC. They wish to redevelop their existing property that is approximately 85, almost 86 acres. It's located in the R80 zoning district. There are several buildings on-site, including two existing residential dwellings that will be demolished and several single-story dwellings, buildings that will be demolished. We're looking to reconstruct a new single residential dwelling, a new garage, and a new gym building. We are looking to reconstruct the existing pool that is located currently in a wetland. There is an existing foundation there, and we're looking to basically rehab that and bring it back into its glory. As part of that, we will be reconfiguring some of the existing gravel driveway, installing a new code-conforming septic system, where the existing septic system now is in the wetland buffer, so we're removing that and then installing a new code-conforming septic outside of the buffer. We are also proposing landscaping and mitigation plantings, which will be developed further as we move into the next iteration of our plan advancement, and then also stormwater management areas. We did submit for a jurisdictional determination with the DEC. We received a non-jurisdictional or a negative determination today, so we will provide that to the board in our next submission. That's great news. There is an existing pond and lake on the site with other town-regulated wetlands. Generally, a lot of the property is encumbered by those wetlands, ponds, and buffers, so there's not a lot of area to basically develop outside of those, so that's why we're here tonight, as part of a wetland permit, erosion control permit, stormwater permit, all that's accompanied with that. We do have with us the architect Xavier Scanlon from here and there. If you have any questions on the architectures that we've provided, we've given them to you as a point of reference, so that you get a flavor of what they're looking to do. But we weren't going to necessarily get into them tonight. We did receive the comment memos from the two consultants, so we are aware that there's a lot more information we have to provide to you. We have submitted this as the concept review plan, and we'll be getting you the next iterations with a lot more information, including a SWIP and mitigation plantings and further design elements. You do want to see the plans? Okay. We can walk through those. So we do... We did provide to the board several pictures of what the current architecture looks like, a bunch of...
You broke it.
I'd like to say that's the first time that's happened, but... Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good? Okay. So we have provided to the board several pictures of the existing houses and other buildings on-site, and then provided some additional architectural representations that I will have Xavier walk through, and I can flip.
Hi, everyone. I'm Xavier. So for context, as you enter the site, the houses are close to the entry, and there's the main house, which is on the lake, and we can reference this on the site plan. There's a guest house, which we think was originally a tractor shed of some description because of the form of the building, it is on a concrete slab directly on the ground, and then there's this large other, we call it a shed building, that also just has a concrete slab on the ground. And unfortunately, there is considerable water damage and mold in the existing structures, so only the guest house is habitable at this stage. So since the property was purchased by the owners, the main house on the lake has not been lived in, and the shed has only been used for storage. So here are some images around the property at different times, and here is the larger body of water, we call the lake, and then there's the smaller pond that that feeds down into, and then it feeds off the property. So the owners really loved the natural context and really want to preserve that, and the lake being such an attractive part of it as well, wanting to preserve the lake and the So once we get into the drawings, you'll get a sense of the style of the building, but we want to keep it very pared back and appropriate to the site, using all natural materials and keeping it quite restrained and not being too modern, or not also trying to be too historical either, finding the balance of the two. A large part of our intent is to blend the architecture with the landscape. The owners really are here to enjoy the landscape. Just more about our kind of material palette we're using, yeah, just lots of stone and timber, and whatever we propose, we want to make sure it lasts, particularly seeing that the current buildings have not withstood the moisture and the water, we just want to make sure what we build does. So it'll make sense when you see the site plan, but we're building off the existing kind of footprints of the current buildings and keeping pitch gable forms and reducing the guest form to a single-level building, and then having the other main house, and we're connecting the two with this glass volume, so that it's one building that has a lot of visibility through the landscape. And so the entry allows you to see through the landscape to the water beyond. So these are very, as with all of our drawings, conceptual at this stage. We just wanted to get this project in front of you to get a loop of feedback as we progress our drawing set with Insite. Similar, yeah. Okay. So I think the site plan drawings are the most helpful to get a sense of what is existing and how we're working with the footprints for what we're proposing. So do you want to talk to the site plan?
So this being the existing conditions plan, you can see where we have the main house, the guest house, another one-story building that we are removing, so we have three buildings here, some smaller buildings that are being removed, and then that existing pool foundation that we're looking to rehab and bring back. There is an existing asphalt basketball court that we're looking to remove as well. So as part of this project, we are removing a lot of impervious surfaces and bringing them back to either natural states or pervious surfaces to help with mitigating for any disturbance within the buffers.
Yeah. No, that's all right.
So into the site plan itself, so we have the proposed dwelling, which basically fits on the existing dwelling's foundation area generally with residential portions and bedrooms in this area, looking out onto the pond, really taking advantage of those views and the natural features on the site. The new garage, which you have labeled as a shed, has a portion that you can drive into that's open, and then the back area being enclosed. There is a proposed studio, sauna, and hot tub area that will encumber portions of this area of the lake, with a new dock proposed as well, and then the proposed gym, again the proposed pool, being in that same footprint, a new basketball court over the top of the old one, and then the new code-conforming septic in the top portions of the property here. We do have mitigation plantings in several areas throughout, really taking advantage of trying to enhance those to bring some of the plantings and the disturbed areas into conformance for the disturbance that we're proposing.
So, yeah, I think to add, so this being the new main house absorbs the footprint of the existing main house and guest house and brings it into one. The new carport and shed builds on top of the existing foundations of the current shed building, so that we're staying where those existing buildings are. The gym is also an existing building that we're going to have to demolish and rebuild as well. So we've tried to make the site plan reuse as much of what's already built there as possible, because as well, if you're, this is where the front gate is, we have the small pond here, the large lake here, where the current buildings are. The rest of the property is very steep, rocky terrain that would be nearly impossible to build on, so the constraints of the site with the wetlands and then that rocky incline on the other side really means this is our area where the house should be.
So I think that generally wraps up what we wanted to show you today.
Do you have a question? Do you have floor plans for the dwelling?
We do have conceptual floor plans.
So again, these are in the development still. We wanted to have a loop of feedback and not push them too far without getting your input.
So this being the first floor, so being the first floor, having, actually, maybe this is the area.
That's okay. So this is that entry vestibule that's glass that you can see through, and then the plan also works with the slope of the land, so it's sloping downwards in this direction. So we put the bedrooms here, and then you turn left, and as the hill goes up, you then enter stairs that go up to the living room, then up to the top lake section. So that was also a big consideration in the design of the building and internally how we plan it, so that we're working with the landscape as much as possible, and that was feeding into making sure that our foundations really touch lightly on the land and that we mitigate all of the wetland issues that the current houses, again, haven't been able to contend with properly.
So that long, slender structure is all bedrooms?
Yes, yeah.
And how many bedrooms are there?
There's currently, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Oh, we were told five. On the Zoom meeting, I thought they said five.
Sorry?
On the Zoom meeting, I thought they said five.
No.
And bathrooms.
Yes, but there's, one, two, three, four, five, six bathrooms.
Six bathrooms. Wow.
And there are...
All the kids like to have their own bathrooms now.
Yeah.
They don't clean them, though.
We, yeah, this is for the needs of the family, and to be able to have guests, this is, you know, for Thanksgivings and stuff like that, we wanted to make sure that it was able to accommodate the whole family.
I'm one of nine children. We only had two bathrooms.
So, yeah, this is where you can see the bedrooms, this vestibule, and then as it goes up the landscape.
So when you go into the living room, then there's an other floor, did you say?
Yeah, but it's always on grade going with the slope of the land.
No, but I saw there's two floors. There's a living room, and then what's upstairs?
Um...
Yeah.
So...
It just follows the terrain.
It's just going and going into the living room?
Yeah.
But it's up?
It's up, yeah, but it's not two floors. It's one, yeah.
Are there any bedrooms in the main house?
No, that's it.
So that's living room, kitchen?
Exactly, yeah.
Dining room?
So that's where we didn't want to, didn't want to build multiple houses to potentially house guests. We just wanted to have one kitchen and living room, and then the bedrooms to be able to accommodate that overflow of their guests coming. Yeah, because we went through those options and what was existing on the site, and we didn't want to build two houses.
How's the look and feel of a resort? We just want to say that. Looks like you're building a resort on a single-family property, right?
That's not the intent.
Okay.
And, yeah, it's just for the size of the family and for them to be able to spend this together on holidays, which is their intent, and I think the scale of the property at, you know, 86 acres with a significant body of water, and how much is currently on the site as well, I think sometimes reading it in section, it feels big, but if you get the opportunity to come to the site, I think it feels appropriate.
All right. Thank you.
I wonder if any bathrooms only existed if you had a whole lot of houses.
Bruce, do you have any comments?
Both Mr. Andrews and I developed comment memos. We also had a presentation at the consultants' meeting by the applicant, and...
Bruce, would you holler for me a little bit? Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Would you holler for me a little bit?
Am I hollering? I can also sing if you... I have that low FM voice, Jackie, my wife says, so I'll try my best. So as I said, both John and I have developed comment memos. We also had a meeting at the Kent Consultants' Meeting with the applicant and their consultants. Basically, it's understood at the present, as Jamie indicated, this is more a conceptual plan, and there's more work to be done. I just want to give you a couple of highlights with respect to John's memo. John basically is pointing towards, as is his custom erosion sediment control, stormwater pollution prevention plan, limits of disturbance, and the contents of those documents as well. My perspective is a little bit broader, but let's talk just a bit about the wetlands, because basically, the majority of the developed site is located either in wetland or wetland buffer, and the intent, as the applicant has said, is to remove the existing structures and basically rebuild in that same location. So the applicant is proposing, if I can find it here, to disturb 5,695 square feet of wetlands, 43,705 square feet of wetland buffer jurisdictions of the Town of Kent. However, most of the work is being done in areas previously disturbed, so I think it will be interesting to see as this site develops, how they're going to be mitigating or actually enhancing the wetland systems that are presently. One is, as Jamie alluded to, is that the septic system is in the wetland buffer now, kind of in the middle of the compound, if you will, and that's going to be located entirely outside of the wetland and wetland buffer, which from a pollutant loading perspective to the lakes, et cetera, is a positive feature. But, you know, basically, at the present time, the only action I would recommend to the board this evening is to authorize my office to go out and do a wetland verification pursuant to Chapter 398 of the Town Code, just to confirm we're all on the same page with the wetlands, and other than that, I would just take no additional action, ask the applicants to submit responses to the comment memos and move forward.
Okay. We'd like to make the motion to grant them permission, both John and Bruce, to go out to the site.
I'll make the motion.
Who wants a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I ask one question? Could I have verification?
Sue, do you want to get up and...
I'm sorry.
Say who you are.
Susan Kotzer, Town of Kent. Could I please have verification of the tax map number?
I have it as... Sorry. I have 32 Block 1, Block 2, 26. Is that what you have?
32.1, I'm sorry, 32 dash 1 dash 26.
Okay, it's wrong on here.
That's right.
32 dot...
32 dash 1.
So there's no 2 in it.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Dash 26.
Because I looked up some information and...
I was right on this one.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I see.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a limit on the...
That's mine. Oh, thanks.
Mr. Wallace is coming up here, and it just reminded me to ask him to come up here to discuss with the board this application, because in tearing the buildings down, I'm going to turn this over to Bill to discuss pre-existing nonconforming conditions, any zoning issues that might come up because of the demolition of the buildings, et cetera, so Bill...
No. Oh, well, then it's... You could have that, was right. So I'll take whatever notes you got, and we'll, because it's the next meeting. While I'm here, I'm going to be a little bit of a fly in the ointment here and have some questions about the property, because it has a lake and a pond on it. Has anybody addressed fire protection needs for this large structure that's going in? Lake and pond would make great sites for dry hydrants for the Kent Fire Department. Because of the size of the building and the multiple bedrooms that are in that one section, Knox Box would be a key thing if you're going to have a gated community, a gate at the driveway, that should be on Knox Box also. And the last thing is, any thought on sprinkler systems for the building? Okay, so we look forward for all of those things. I just wanted to get the comments on the record, so...
So I just would request the board at the present to ask the building inspector just to review this application relative to the existing proposed conditions, any zoning elements that might be coming at play.
No, you want me to just...
Yeah, just...
All right, who wants to make a motion to grant permission for the building inspector to... How do you want to word it? Just to...
I think what you want to say is you want to authorize the building inspector to review the plans, determine if there are any zoning issues pursuant to the proposed action.
Okay, to review plans and see if there's any issues with the proposed zoning change.
I'll move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody else have any questions here?
On the board? Not yet. Maybe later. Bye-bye.
Okay.
I think we're all set. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jamie.
Bye, Jamie. Have a great evening.
All right, next is Holmes Presbyterian.
Mr. Chairman, I could speak to that.
Yes.
I have prepared for the board this evening for your consideration an agreement, which has not yet been seen by the applicant, which you can authorize be referred to them tonight. It's to return their erosion sediment control bond, as well as a large portion of their stormwater maintenance bond that is currently held by the town. The agreement also indicates that 12,500 of the current erosion sediment control bond will be retained by the town and converted into a long-term maintenance bond.
All right, thanks, Sarah. Yeah, this basically, Holmes Presbyterian had a rather lengthy construction process. They completed the process, and now they're requesting their bonds be returned. There are two bonds, as Sarah alluded to, one was for an erosion sediment control bond in the amount of $25,694. The second was a performance bond for stormwater management facilities in the amount of $61,857.50. And as Sarah alluded to, what the applicant is requesting to do is to take some of that second bond, $12,500, and put that into a long-term stormwater maintenance bond. The remainder amount from the original would be $49,357.50, which would be returned to the applicant, the 12,500 would be retained as the maintenance bond. As Sarah indicated, the applicant hasn't seen this yet, so the action for the board this evening would be, if you're in concurrence with this resolution, to have it sent to the applicant and request the applicant respond by the next meeting, either in person or writing, at... writing, as to their approval or not. And if it is approved by the applicant, then the next step, next October, this October would be to submit that for approval to the town board.
Okay.
Okay?
We'd like to make the motion to send the agreement to the applicant. And if approved, we will address this next month.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Homeland Towers, next.
I'm going to recuse myself, so...
Just for record, Tim Pops is recusing himself from this project.
We're doing Homeland Towers?
Oh, sorry. Did I... Oh, I'm looking at something here, sorry. We'll do the Homeland Towers.
All right.
Sorry, sorry, Jackie. Sorry, I was looking at this.
Good evening.
Good evening, for the record. My name is David Kenny, attorney with Snyder &amp; Snyder. Here tonight, with me is Vincent Xavier, Regional Manager of Homeland Towers. The application, as you know, is for a wireless telecommunications facility over at...
Fifty-nine Horton Town Hill Road.
The facility was recently reduced in height. We originally had proposed a hundred-and-fifty-foot facility, is now a hundred-and-thirty feet being proposed. We did also respond to other comments we had received from the town engineer and the board's planner and environmental consultant. We now just recently received yesterday some more comments from the board's engineer and today, just a few hours ago, more comments from Bruce, the board's planner. So, we will be providing a responsive submission to respond to their comments. One of the comments, I believe that was discussed at the work session meeting and also in the comment memos, was a request for a site visit. So, we would like to discuss the opportunity with the board to have a scheduled site visit within the next week or so, so that we could go through those comments and, you know, review any further kind of comments that come out of a site visit with Mr. Andrews and Mr. Barber. I'm also here to answer any other questions the board may have.
I have a question. Vincent, when we did the plan for the infrastructure many years ago...
Yes.
Is that the study that you're still using or did you do a current study of your own?
No, we're still using that, you know, the... There's been no new infrastructure built in that area that would change the plan. The need still exists, so we're still trying to complete that master plan that, you know, we started so many years ago.
Oh, that was for the town's master plan.
The town's master plan.
This is a personal... This is somebody's personal property.
That's true.
But I'm just... I just would have thought that you would have had your own up-to-date... It's been so many years that there would be an up-to-date study.
Well, so just, if I think your question is, there was an up-to-date radio frequency justification report study that was submitted with this application, so that shows the updated coverage, the existing coverage and proposed coverage from this facility. I think Vincent is just discussing the town's wireless master plan hasn't been superseded. There's no new wireless master plan. And I think that's the answer to your question was more is...
Well, it was also to do the master plan was not to have a bunch of cell towers all over the place also, so that's why we did the master plan. And we already then, if we do the one at Eustis Field, there'll be five cell towers in the town of Kent.
Correct. And in that master plan, we're proposing this facility in an area that was identified in that master plan as being a place to support a wireless facility. But again, we did do an updated study for the exact area that shows that there still is a significant gap in coverage in this area and in the surrounding areas of the property. So, we're using both the original master plan is showing that it was originally viewed by the town as an area that could be supporting a wireless facility. And then also, we provided a new updated radio frequency justification report that shows you the existing coverage today.
But the master plan was for town-owned properties.
That's not true.
Yes, it is. I was the supervisor. Yes, it was.
So, yes, the goal of that was always to use town property where possible.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Vincent.
Yes, but when you have a plan like that, you're really trying to determine how can you cite facilities in locations that are going to minimize the proliferation that you're talking about. So, if a town property is not available in that area where the area of need was identified, then yes, you would have to use private property. And this one being near a parkway, near electrical transmission lines, is still a very suitable and a good property to meet that need. And I know you mentioned, oh, now we're going to have five towers. And honestly, even part of the original master plan, you're going to need more because of the terrain and the size of the town of Kent. It's not just, oh, we have enough towers. It's you need certain towers at certain heights to provide coverage to certain areas. And like I said, because of the terrain, they don't just cover, you know, a two-mile diameter circle perfectly. They're weird shapes and... Bless you.
Bless you.
And so, you will need more after this in order to provide coverage to everyone within the town of Kent, including first responders.
Well, also, way back then, it was going to be that, I don't know if it was called repeaters or whatever, but I remember Manny was saying that we might not need cell towers, that there would be this other smaller box that they could put on poles. That would be something that was going to be in five years, and now here we are thirteen years later.
No, I think you may be referring to the distributed antenna system or something along those lines. I know Manny wouldn't have said, yeah, we don't need towers anymore, especially since that's his business that he started.
No, no, but it was... But it was going to be another form of being able to do it, so...
Well, when that form exists, you know, I'm sure part of this application, if approved, there'll be a removal bond. If the tower is no longer needed, it'd be removed. I know lately, we get asked a lot of questions about satellite, and there may be some technology in the future where towers are no longer needed. And if that's the case, the condition, if approved, could be that it would be removed. But we're not there yet and we're not there now. Right now, the need exists and this is the way to cover it. So, we do need a tower in this area.
Thank you, Vincent.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
So, we have three comment memos that are developed by, number one, Clint Smith, who's the cell tower consultant for the town, John Andrews, the planning board engineer, and myself. I'm just going to give you some highlights. It's been recognized that the project is now ongoing, and so I believe the planning board would be in their rights, even though the applicant has already said that the shot clock is told, to just make for certain that you find the application incomplete. But Mr. Smith, I'll just give you the highlights. Lot of stuff here. So, Mr. Smith is needing more information regarding the RF compliance assessment report. He also says he needs clarification, the reason for the hundred-and-forty-seven foot versus one-twenty-five foot with the propagation plant that basically explains that. Updated construction drawings, updated co-location letter, and also, he feels that a second balloon test should be conducted at a hundred-and-twenty-five feet and a hundred-and-fifty feet above ground level. Mr. Andrews... I feel you back there, David. Mr. Andrews is concerned predominantly with the erosion sediment control. The SWIP was provided on the plans themselves. He is looking for a narrative which typically accompanies a stormwater pollution prevention plan. He has questions about the driveway. It was lowered from in areas of eighteen percent grade down to below fifteen percent, but the town code requires a variance above ten percent. He's looking for information of the highway superintendent, as well as the emergency services people about accessibility. Also, the surface of the driveway being proposed as gravel and steeper slope areas, it may be more prudent to have an asphalt or more durable surface. So, the driveway is something that he was looking to get more information on. The applicant is indicating that they provide a structural report at the time of building permit application. He's requesting that information be submitted earlier than that. If not now, then it's a condition of approval to be reviewed prior to issuing or applying for the building permit. And he's looking for some additional clearing limit information and some other associated items. first is, from my perspective, the visual assessment needs clarification. I'll talk a bit more about fully in a minute. There was a real property appraisal that was conducted, and it would be proven if the board would like to refer that out to a third-party appraiser just to confirm the information that's contained in that appraisal. The narrative that was provided to us had a lot of good information and a lot of the comments have been resolved. However, some of the comments just indicated C plans or plan this. These are documents which should be available to be easily read by the public in their review, and so I'm just suggesting that that narrative be improved to indicate exactly where in the plan such information is, or more adequately, to provide a more narrative explanation as well on some of those questions. Mentioned the SWIP and the driveway. NEPA and SHPO reviews are pending, and there are substantial number of variances required for this application. And typically, when that's the case, the planning board will look to see if there are areas where the application could be relocated to reduce the number of variances required. So, those are basically hitting you with the highlights. I'll go back to the visual assessment in a second. But the first action for this board to take, if you so choose, is to, again, reiterate that the application, in your opinion, remains incomplete and that such the shot clock would be told. You would just take a vote and...
We just need a simple...
Shot clock would be told. So, you're basically going to vote presently as the application is either complete or incomplete.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to state that we believe that the application is incomplete and that the shot clock should be told.
Okay. Thank you. As far as the visual assessment...
Can we need a second?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The visual assessment, the board will recall that back in November of 2024, the applicant requested that the balloon test, as required in the town code, be conducted earlier than all of the subsequent reviews that are currently be conducted. The rationale behind that was is that the balloon test is best conducted during leaf off or winter conditions. The balloon test was then conducted in April, but in the resolution, it was very specific in terms of what the planning board was looking. And actually, you were following the recommendations of the cell tower consultant, Mr. Smith. And that was, is that two balloons would be flown at one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet, the second a hundred-and-fifty feet. The balloons would be of the same size in diameter, but of different color. So, basically, the applicant submitted through Saratoga, so it's a visual assessment report, and we reviewed that back in May. And it was just inconclusive, at least to my review, in the sense that the verbiage in that report indicated that a balloon was utilized to test at one-hundred-and-fifty feet. I'm paraphrasing, but that was the general idea. And then some of the photographs appeared to show two balloons, some appeared not to show two balloons, and in captions, there was the word balloon rather than balloon. So, it's a little bit confusing, at least to me. And I was writing that in my memo. What transpired is that the visual assessment that's currently being, or has been submitted by the applicant, that sentence where the one balloon at a hundred-and-fifty feet has been amended in that report to indicate that two balloons were flown, one at a hundred-and-twenty-five feet and a hundred-and-fifty feet. But for whatever reason, there's no revision date at all in the front of that visual assessment. I'm not sure what happened there. So, I think at the present time, you know, as far as the applicant, they have made it relatively unclear, at least to me, in terms of what has transpired with regards to the balloon test. And also, you know, in terms of following complete resolution requirements, that was not done because the balloons were actually flown and they were of different sizes and of the same color, kind of in reverse of what the board is looking for. The resolution from November also indicates that the board may review the balloon test and that if you find additional testing or supplemental information needs to be provided, that would be something you could do, and that was in the resolution back, as I said, in November. So, that's the information right now. And the board may choose at present to take no action this evening and give the applicant an opportunity to respond to the memos, provide more, maybe have clear information on the balloon test or more documentation of the balloon test. Or you may choose also to direct the applicant, if you feel it's appropriate, based upon the information you have, to redo the balloon test under the parameters of the resolution and of the town code. Lastly, the site inspection that Vincent had alluded to has been scheduled with Mr. Andrews and myself and others, if you wish. Thursday, a week from today, we'll be meeting at Town Hall at nine AM. Any questions?
No, I'm just, I guess paraphrasing. So, when we did the resolution back in November, we requested them to fly it at both one-twenty-five and one-fifty, same-sized balloon, different colors. And from what I've seen myself on everything that we were given, it doesn't seem like that has been followed. That's personally, because as I said, most of... Or as you said, sorry. Most of the photographs show one balloon. I believe it was a red balloon. And as you said, there was one statement on it, balloon, but you couldn't see anything. But I personally think that it just sounds like that wasn't followed. And second is, if the memo was sent out stating that there was a balloon flown at a hundred-and-fifty feet, and then the same document was sent back with a modification, there should be an amendment date on that. Just...
We agree with that. Would you like a response?
Just if I may, just to reiterate for the board, the date of the resolution is November fourteenth, 2024. The first whereas discusses the sizes of the balloons and the height and what have you. Second whereas says, the applicant has acknowledged that additional balloon tests may be required, an additional review of the application, and other additional approval authorities may require one as well. So, there was some anticipation, I think on the board's part in writing this resolution, that maybe there would be some additional patient required as time moved on. So, just to make that clear to you.
Okay.
So, if I could just touch on the balloons. Were you there that day, Bruce? Did you see the balloons personally? No. There was two balloons flown the entire time, as far as one being four feet, three feet. Honestly, when you're filling the balloon up with helium, you try to go...
Were they different colors?
They were not different colors. Honestly, first, just to start, if you want me to fly the balloon again, that's not a problem. But when you're going to do two different colors, we had to do this once in the town of Bedford, if you're doing two different locations at the same height and you're driving around trying to see where you can see the balloon from, it makes sense to have two different colors because you don't know which one you're seeing, which location you're seeing. If the balloons are above each other, having them the same color does not make the balloon test itself defective in any way because, you know, if you can only see one balloon, that's because that's the top one. The other one would be below it. So, the differentiation in color seems...
That's just before that. That's not necessarily true because depending on your view, there should be, there could be something blocking the lower balloon you see in the top or vice versa. That's not always the case. Just because you only see one balloon doesn't mean...
Well, from the visibility I saw, it didn't seem like there was any instance where you could only see a lower balloon and not the top.
But I only, from everything I saw, that it only showed one balloon in the lower.
Yeah. Well, what we could do is, and this is the first I'm hearing about the site visit on Thursday, I can definitely make it at nine AM. What I'd also like to do is maybe if we could start at the site and then go back to Town Hall with yourself and Mr. Andrews and kind of go through with my engineer any questions so that we can answer fully in the next submission, that would be ideal for us. If you want, that day, I'll fly a balloon that morning, you know, weather permitting, obviously, but so that you're going to be there that day. I'll fly it at one-hundred-and-thirty feet, the new proposed height. I don't think we need two balloons anymore because we're not talking about reducing the height anymore. I can have it up that morning for you.
I think, though, that, you know, a couple of things to comment on what Vincent mentioned. First of all, we're always happy to meet with people and forward applications, but I think in this instance, it would be maybe better suited for the applicant to provide in writing to this board the responses to comment memo. Unless and sorts, the board wants to have a special meeting, which is what that would be after the site visit. If that's the case, we'd certainly recommend at least two of the board members attend that meeting, so it'll be entirely up to you. The second thing is that by flying a balloon on a week from this morning, that's not really providing the same process. Our code is very specific in terms of the process, in terms of public noticing and giving the neighbors and the people in the community an opportunity to kind of visualize what's happening and how it might impact them. So, I don't think that, although it's well-intentioned, I don't think that would meet the requirements of redoing the balloon test.
Again, I understand Bruce's comment. I think his original point was there was maybe an opportunity for our expert consultant, Saratoga, who prepared the visual analysis report, to maybe respond to some of these comments, maybe provide additional information. If the board still decides at that time to schedule another balloon test, we're not objecting to it, which is like the opportunity since the request is specifically on the people who conducted the balloon test and the report that they prepared, if we could give them the opportunity to respond to some of these comments.
Does anybody have any issues with that? And they can address why there was never a revision on their memo? And they can address why there was never a revision on their memo?
That one I will specifically address with them, because they should have a revision on future memos, and we'll make sure that that goes forward. The only question I have was Bruce read a memo tonight from Clint Smith. What was the date of that memo?
Bill, do you have something to say?
Oh, yeah.
Come on up, come on up while he's searching for that, while he's searching for the date.
And this is in reference to the balloon test, because when I do the balloon test, my phone's going to ring off the wall like it did last time. I just want to make sure that we, and these folks made notification, they had it posted, Mother Nature blew the sign down and everything else, we just need to make sure that doesn't happen this time again, make sure that the neighbors are all aware when that test is going to be. I believe there's supposed to be written notices also. So we just need to make sure we document all of that, so when the phone does ring off my wall, I know that everything's been done this time. Okay?
I will do it myself.
Thank you.
Hey, Bill, before you leave, I think last time there was a question of which neighbors got notified, and the way you prepare that 500-foot.
Correct. Our system, our system that we use from BAS takes, if you say 500 feet, it takes it from the middle of that parcel.
Right, right.
Okay? Our system does not go from the lot line. And I am not going to go onto GIS and locate every property within 500 feet. That's the planning board.
And I would never ask that of you.
I would suggest that the applicant may wish to provide that information.
I don't have a problem with that either, but I mean, I'm not doing it.
I'm just wondering if you pick 1,000 feet instead of 500, you probably got it covered.
When you take a property that is 11 acres, I think this is what, 11-acre parcel, 1,000 foot is nothing. Okay? Okay, when it takes from the middle, it's the drawback from this program. I just don't have, and my clerk doesn't have the time to sit down and map out where all the properties are and then go 500 feet from the edge of the property. We just don't have that time.
Will you provide this for your review prior to any of going in? And it'll be from the property line, not from the center of the property.
I think that would be sufficient to make sure you're in compliance with the code requirements as well.
So if I'm understanding properly, the board wishes at present to have the applicant respond to the memos for the next meeting or as possible. In addition, have more narrative explanations from the visual assessment, corporation, Saratoga Associates, and then at the next meeting, you'll render your decision relative to the balloon test needing to be done or not. Am I correct with that, just so the applicant understands too?
I believe so. Everybody?
Yep.
And just add, we would still like the site visit on Thursday.
Absolutely, and as the applicant's given us a reservation to do so, we will be doing that, and we'll be meeting here at 9:00 on Town Hall, just so you know.
Unless there's any other questions from the board, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good seeing you.
Bye-bye. All right. Thank you. It'll be, sorry.
I'm sorry. I thought you were doing the Trail Club.
That's what I'm going to do.
Oh, Jackie has.
Yeah. So the Trail Club, sorry, I.
Well, Jackie.
Jackie, could you tell Tim to come back in, please?
Sure, I almost break the mic and I get bumped.
That's it. I apologize, Jamie. But just for record, Jackie Bouchard is recusing herself from the Trail Club. This is what happens, you got too many papers in for the year. Yes, it's been a long day.
Isn't, we have training on Tuesday, right? We're going to talk about that.
You don't drive it.
You can see in my eyes.
It's not sure.
All right. So I guess we'll go with, which do you want to go first with?
It does not matter to me.
Sorry?
It does not matter to me.
Okay, then we'll do the escrow.
Sure. Go with the easy one. Hopefully, that's the easy one. So I believe that, so Jamie Legudis from Inside Engineering, serving in landscape architecture. As far as I know, we are requesting the escrow to be released. I think that's basically it on that front. I'm more here for the septic repair portion of it, so if you don't mind.
You can roll right into the septic repair.
So this, this project is for the Trail, the Trail Club, formerly known as the Gypsy Trail Club. They have an existing septic that is, services their lower lodge, their upper lodge, and their clubhouse buildings. The septic itself has just hit the end of its lifespan and just needs to be replaced. So portions of the existing septic are being removed and tanks being removed, abandoned and crushed and removed in accordance with the health department approvals and regulations that are, we have to follow for those. A new septic system is being installed for that. It's in the general area of the existing septic that's proposed as being installed in. Overall disturbance that we're proposing for this is 0.7 acres, so it's under the acre threshold, so post-construction stormwater is not required. But it is in an area that has some steep slopes, so we do need a steep slopes permit and erosion control permit.
Mr. Andrews put together a comment memo on this. I did not, simply an erosion semi-control permit. John is indicating that he's looking for just a couple of very minor things. Of course, Putnam County Department of Health approval for the work that's being conducted. There is a requirement in the script to provide some information regarding historical archaeological indicators, and basically just some updating on some of the drawings. But John basically, and I agree with him, is of the opinion this is a septic system repair, it's necessary, and basically with those provisos of Public Health Department of approval, et cetera, he's recommending that, number one, that the planning board waive the public hearing. Number two, at present this evening, send the application to administrative track. And number three, to accept the bond estimate that John has prepared, erosion control bond estimate to be referred to the town board in the amount of $5,800. So number one would be waiving the public hearing. Number two.
Sorry, I have on this 5,780.
Now, if you look a little bit lower some, the last.
Oh, I see.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
He must have bumped it up for some reason.
Okay. So is everybody okay with waiving the public hearing?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion for the property at tax map 32-1-25, the replacement of septic system. We would like to waive the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Second thing would be to authorize this to be going to the administrative track.
Who would like to move the said application to administrative track? Who would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And number three is the acceptance of the erosion bond estimate of $5,800 with referral for approval to the town board.
Okay, we'd like to make the motion to accept the erosion control bond of the $5,800 and send it to the town board for approval.
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
See, Jamie was worth waiting for.
It was.
I apologize again for that.
No, no, no worries. See you everyone next month. Have a good night. Have a good one.
All right. You can tell Jackie on your way out she can come back in again. Please. Now we're going on to Jamie Smith Fitness.
She's coming.
Oh, she's coming.
We missed you, Jack.
Come on up.
Yes. Okay. So this is an application for a sign for, I actually have, in looking at the sign of Jamie Smith Fitness. Sign itself is to be a wall-mounted sign, two feet by 10 feet, 120 square feet in size. It will be constructed of aluminite, and will have a white background with black vinyl. The application meets the code requirements. Mr. Walters has issued a letter indicating that he agrees and that he recommends that the sign be handled administratively at the present time and that the applicant is authorized to submit a building permit. So that's a picture of the sign that's proposed that is in front of you. Do you need a motion and a vote?
It's just de minimis?
Yep.
All right, so we'd like to make the motion to, for the tax map 2-1-4, for the sign to make it de minimis and send it to the building inspector.
I'll move.
Two seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now going to, sorry. Yes, we have another one for Chestnut Market sign, which is GNS.
We do. This is also a wall sign that is measuring one foot by 11, 11.5 inches by 17 feet 9 inches. It is to be illuminated with LED lighting, constructed of plexiglass, and will have a white background and green vinyl letters and a green border. This is the Chestnut Market sign application. I have a letter from the building inspector indicating he's reviewed this, found to be compliant with zoning, and recommends that it be treated in a diminished manner, heading for administrative track, and having the applicant apply for a building permit.
Yes, just replacing the opposite gas station.
Yep, that's it.
Okay, who would like to make the motion to send it to the building department de minimis, which is tax ID 12-2-2?
I'll move.
Two seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we're below the line.
We are below the line. Trail Club is, we're doing some research on that, John and I and Betvira. We're not exactly certain what's being requested here. There was a project where a gentleman was removing a pool and working on a retaining wall, but that has not to our knowledge been completed, at least we've not been informed of such, nor we have done any inspections on that site. So right now, that kind of is an information pending further review. Lespinna property, we're waiting for more information from the individuals doing the work out there. Cohen also, the architect is providing updated drawings for that lot line revision. Atlanta should be removed, that I believe is signed by the chairman and Mr. Andrews and can be removed from the list. AcuB properties, we haven't seen anything new submitted to that. Torres property, Paul Lynch is going to provide us with this information, but he has not as of yet. Nichols Road project, we haven't seen anything submitted in that regard recently. Repoli property, also Paul Lynch project, we're waiting to get information. Murrow Equipment has been completed with this planning board, they're done here, but they are seeking additional approvals from other regulatory agencies, DEP, DEC, Health Department, et cetera. The Rider property, have not received any new information with respect to that. Lakeside Bible Conference Center, it's my understanding they've engaged an engineer to do some of the work out there, but we've not yet seen anything. Holly property just received some information from DEC regarding some approvals, they're still waiting for, I believe, the septic system be completed on that project. Brew 52 Development, nothing new has been submitted. Metric Motors, we have not seen anything submitted on that recently. And TJ Con, contracting, same thing, we haven't seen anything recently. And that's what you got.
Mr. Walters behind it.
Oh, there you go.
I received in, two days ago, a letter from the Department of Health that Murrow Equipment did receive their approval for a wastewater treatment plant on that site, they have two years.
Okay, good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's everything. Who would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?